Hey Leah.
Hey, I was gonna say everybody was muted but Rose and she wasn't there. So.
Just helping the mayor out real quick.
Okay.
I've got a Texas Tech thing behind me.
We won't hold that against you.
There's Pat. Was this one?
Everything went silent. Rose. I can hear Doyle. I couldn't hear you, Rose. Are you on?
I'm not mic.
Okay.
Can y'all hear me?
I hear you. What is that?
In case y'all wonder what's going on. Yeah.
You guys. We had some feedback because some folks were really close together.
There's Greg.
I think you ought to mute everybody until they're ready.
I agree.
Hold on, I'm trying to mute Brian because that's the source of our audio issues.
I just muted myself.
Okay, is anybody still getting feedback?
Not now.
Now, okay.
No, we still aren't. Hello.
Is the tablet?
Hello.
Nothing, it's fine now.
No, it's not.
Okay. I'm gonna take him off the tablet and I'm gonna go sit next to him with my laptop.
What are you gonna do? I'm gonna shut down the tablet all together with my laptop and I'll just sit with him. Who comes in with me?
Well, he's gotta have camera. I'll just have to stay with you. Say something and see if we can hear you.
Greg, can you hear me? Nope.
I'm clear.
Okay.
I was on mute.
I hear you.
All right, Pat.
I hear you.
Okay. Who else did we have on? I don't see anybody else.
We also have.
Well, is that, we're gonna have to hit that button every time?
Not necessarily, no.
There's KJ.
There's Eddie, Derek.
There's Derek.
Two Plonors on here. We got Autumn and Randy, a couple of the folks. Now, we can do the view like this if you want. Does that make it easier for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, these are folks that are just dialed in without video.
Yeah. We've got five minutes, everyone. We'll start in a few minutes.
And we'll start the live stream to Facebook in a couple of minutes, too.
Rose.
Ma'am.
If we have something we want to say, do you want us to just unmute ourselves and speak?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The only thing that we need to be concerned about is the Zoom meeting will automatically track in on wherever it's getting noise. So please mute yourself until it's time to speak because otherwise we're gonna have a problem with Zoom not knowing who to listen to.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just waiting on Eric. Here comes Bernie.
Morning, ma'am.
Hey Betty. Can you tilt your camera down just a touch? We're only seeing the top of your head. There you go. And here's Eric. All right, four minutes till lift off, guys.
Rose, is Gary not joining us?
Oh, I honestly didn't realize that he wasn't on yet. I assume he's going to be joining us.
All right, thank you. Gary? I can, but I'm sitting next to you.
Just here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say something, Brian.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Gary just pulled into his driveway.
Okay, so we need to give him a minute?
Yeah, I think so. Might text him.
Give everybody about 60 seconds on how this works.
Okay.
You can hear him.
All right, who's got the beeping thing in the background? Gary just pulled into his driveway, so I'm gonna give him a minute. I have no idea.
I have no idea.
Everybody is muted.
Doyle and Brian, because they're so close to each other, their mics are picking each other up.
We tried to victim Brian from the room, but he didn't leave. I think he's going now.
Bastards.
Excuse me, sir.
Hi, KJ.
Is this better?
Oh, we're not getting the ding dong anymore.
How about I go to my office?
Before we call the order, I need to start the Facebook livestream.
Is this better, Rose?
Much.
Okay.
Couple of minutes and then we'll start.
No? Do you need me?
I'm not too terribly worried about background noise from his office.
Hi, Gary.
Well, I literally can't move anywhere else in the building, so.
I was only gonna get worried about that beeping if it just became a solid beep. Then I was gonna get worried. Okay.
Start the livestream and we're gonna start.
Okay. Okay, give me just a second. Bear with me, guys. I'm getting the Facebook stream started. Taking its sweet time. In the spinning circle. I don't know why this is taking so long, but it's my first time, so we'll give it a second.
We still don't have Gary?
We still do not have Gary?
Doesn't seem like it, just checking.
No, it does not look like we have him.
You want me to holler out my kitchen window?
Well, we're already recording to the cloud, so I'm gonna give about 30 more seconds and if this doesn't click together, then we're just gonna move on. Gotcha. Because I can always post the video after the fact.
Hey, Rose?
Yes, sir.
Ken, I'm assuming everybody's still gonna participate in the meeting, blah, 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 blah. We're just waiting to go to a live. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all of our participation is active and everything's working well. It's just connection to the livestream on Facebook seems to have a glitch. And we're about to skip over that step and just do our thing.
Yeah. I know a couple of other cities had problems with that last night as well.
Yeah, the two, it's like it's not completely processing.
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, we can go ahead and get started then.
All right, thanks, everyone who called the meeting to order 7:05 PM. And Alicia, will you help us with a quorum, please?
Alicia, you're muted.
Yes. As I call your name, please unmute yourself and say present. Mayor Moss?
Present.
Councilmember Contreras?
Present.
Councilmember Fennel?
Present.
Councilmember Runningbaum?
Present.
Councilmember Young?
Present.
Councilmember McCon?
All right, thank you. First order of business is consideration of minutes to approve the city council and regular and workshop meeting minutes of March the 10th and March 24th, 2020. Do we have a motion, please?
First, I have a comment. I did notice on the meeting minutes for March 10th on the adjournment, we don't have who made the motion and who made the second. I believe a lot of us volunteered, so I will say that I made the motion. If somebody else wants to say that they were the second.
I second.
Thank you.
I'll make that correction.
Thank you. I move that we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
We have to do a roll call, sir.
Sorry about that.
As I call your name, say yay your name. Councilmember Contreras?
Yay.
Councilmember Fennel?
Yay.
Councilmember Runningbaum?
Yay.
Councilmember Young?
Yay.
Motion passes. Here we go again. Next. Next item, are there any public comments, Alicia?
No, sir.
Thank you. First item is a public hearing. This public hearing will be held to discuss the City of Willow Park's proposed project to add water line improvements on the north side of Interstate 20 from FM 3325 West approximately five miles. One of the purposes of this hearing is to discuss the potential environmental impacts of the project and alternatives to it. The total estimate cost of the project is $13.7 million. The estimated monthly bill for a typical residence currently $95.79. An application for financial assistance for the project has been filed with the Texas Water Development Board, P.O. Box 13231, Austin, Texas 78711. Environmental information document for the project has been prepared, which will be available for public review at the City Hall, Willow Park City Hall, at 516 Rancho Road, Willow Park, Texas 76087, at 20 hours of 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM for 30 days following the date of this notice. Written comments on the proposed project may be sent to Jacob and Martin Engineering, 3465 Curry Lane, Abilene, Texas 79605, or to the Texas Water Development Board. Item number two, the floodplain wetland. This project involves potential construction in the 100-year floodplain and in a wetland. Alternatives to construction in a floodplain wetland, potential impacts on floodplains, wetlands, and proposed mitigation measures will be addressed during the public hearing.
Eric, do you want me to pull your exhibit up now?
Oh, you can do that, yeah. Yeah, this just shows the route that the water line will take and the location of the pump station on El Chico. This was included in the environmental document that was prepared and is just provided to add some description to what was described in the notice. I'll just real quickly reiterate a little bit of it. The water line is gonna run along the north side of IH20. The first portion of it, starting at 3325 to El Chico, will be in private property. After that, it is intended to have it in Tex-ut rightaway, in the interstate rightaway. The rest of the way to Hudson Oaks, and again, the pump station is at the site located on El Chico. I forget the address. Don't have that in front of me, but a couple of blocks off of IH20 to the north. The, there has been an environmental document prepared to report. It's a draft report. Part of what has to go into that report is the results of this hearing. So if any comments are made or we get any comments afterwards, those will be included in the report, in the write-up, and any mitigation that's required will be addressed at that time. So that report has been available and other than adding in the information from this meeting, it is complete. We haven't identified any significant environmental issues that would require any unusual mitigation. There are floodplains. We have to cross the river and several creeks, so there are floodplains and wetlands that'll have to be crossed. That would typically be done by bore, which would be the mitigation in and of itself. So other than that, we haven't identified any issues that would be of environmental concern.
Any other questions or comments? We opened the public hearing up at 7:08 PM. The public hearing is closed at 7:12 PM. Next item on the regular agenda item. To consider and act on a preliminary plat of Lot 1, Block H, Crown Point Edition Phase 5, being 9.27 acres McKinney and Williams survey, abstract number 954, and Wesley Franklin survey, abstract number 468, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Betty, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, they're going to show you the preliminary plat for this 9.27 acre subdivision. It is a proposed single lot subdivision. You'll remember that the property was zoned PDR3 Plan Development for multifamily senior living housing last year. And you also approved a site development plan for the property. It'll be 152 unit, 117,000 square foot senior living complex. The site development plan was approved in October of last year. This is the final step in the process to plat the property into a single lot. You will note that the property has frontage on Mary Lou Drive and also it has frontage on JD Toll's. Now, the entrance will be on Mary Lou and it is a single entrance into the subdivision. Fire lanes that are 26-foot in width are proposed and are to be dedicated as a part of the plat. Eight-inch water and sanitary sewer service will be provided to the property. The water line is located in Mary Lou Drive and will be extended onto the property. And it will also be a loop system to provide the fire protection. Sanitary sewer service will come from the eight-inch sanitary sewer main in Toll's Drive and be extended into the property. Stormwater in the subdivision flows northwest to southeast and the stormwater runoff will be conveyed to the existing creek that's on the south side of the property, north of Toll's Drive. The stormwater drainage improvements will be made in compliance with the cities of Willow Park's ordinances. And this comes forth with a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is a unanimous recommendation to approve the plat as presented. And we will need a motion following any questions you have on the preliminary plat and then your next item is the final plat.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat as read.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments for Betty? All right, Alicia, will you take the roll call, please?
Aye.
Councilmember Fennel?
Aye.
Councilmember Runningbaum? Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two, to consider and act on a final plat of Lot 1, Block H, Crown Point Edition, Phase 5, being 9.27 acres, McKinney and Williams survey, abstract number 954, and Wesley Franklin survey, abstract number 468, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Betty?
Unless the commission, I mean unless the council has other questions, this is the final plat for the preliminary that you just approved and I would be happy to answer those questions.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat of Lot 1, Block H, Crown Point Edition, Phase V, being 9.27 acres McKinney and Williams survey, abstract number 954, and Wesley Franklin survey, abstract number 468.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Alicia, would you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Councilmember Fennel?
Aye.
Councilmember Runningbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Item number three, to consider and act on the selection of engineering and professional services for a clean water state revolving fund application. Is that Mr. Grimes?
Yes, sir.
You're up.
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Back in January, or maybe in latest February, we were discussing applying for, in the state revolving fund where we had received preliminary favorable opinion from TWDB. Part of that process is we put out for RFP for engineering, financial advisor, and bond counsel. We received one engineering proposal from Jacob and Martin. We received one financial advisor proposal from Hilltop Securities. And we received a number of bond counsel proposals. And after review by me, Bernie, and Candy, we concluded. we concluded that bond counsel of Norton, Rose, and Fulbright scored the highest. And so our recommendation to counsel is to appoint Jacob and Martin as the engineer, Hilltop Securities as financial advisor, and Norton, Rose, Fulbright as the bond counsel. This is, this is the same group that has done other similar water development board projects with us in the past.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve Jacob and Martin for engineering, Hilltop Securities for financial advisor, and Norton, Rose, Fulbright for bond counsel.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion for Brian? Alicia, would you take the roll, please?
Aye.
Councilmember Fennel?
Aye.
Councilmember Runningbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
And Councilmember McCon has joined us. Aye or nay?
Willow Park to Gary.
Okay, I'll count that as he's not here yet, so motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Item number four, discussion on the impact of the COVID-19 on City of Willow Park operations and finances. Mr. Grimes?
The saying always goes, may you live in interesting times, and I think we can certainly clarify, the last couple of weeks is some interesting times. You know, just kind of polling everybody at City Hall, we've never seen anything like this, a complete and total shutdown of the economy. And so we are, you know, we are adjusting the way every city's trying to adjust. I know everyone in this office has been in touch with, with their counterparts in other cities, and we're all just kind of bouncing ideas off each other, how are you handling this, and how do you solve this issue? But it didn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that when they started shutting down businesses, that not only does that impact those businesses and those employees, and certainly our thoughts are with those guys, but it also will have an impact on our sales tax as well. And so shortly after that, me and Jake Weber and Candy Scott gathered around, had a conference call, and we were just going to discuss the economic impact of that, and how this function, how this will happen operationally. I'll tell you, operationally, you know, when 95% of your general fund goes to public safety, you're not really gonna be able to furlough a lot of employees. The public works, guys, they're still incredibly busy, water still has to run, toilets still have to flush, poplars still have to get fixed. And so those guys have been kept busy, and, you know, City Hall, we've been, we've been incredibly busy as well. So operationally, we haven't seen that much of an impact, although our jobs have changed a little bit. One of the things that we decided to do is anything that's not essential, any nonessential projects we have put on the shelf for the time being. And, and we have not really gone into too much as far as starting new projects. I think we all want some clarity as far as what the next two to three to four months look like before we, before we start trying to resume normal operations and normal planning and execution of our strategic plan. But one of the things that, that was most concerning to me was the economic impact that we're gonna see. So after consulting with Jake and Candy, you know, the three of us, you know, we're estimating about a 50% loss in sales tax for the remainder of the fiscal year. That's gonna be about a 250,000 to 300,000 shortfall in sales tax. Obviously, we don't know how long this is gonna go, we don't know if it's prolonged or not, but we're just going to the end of this fiscal year, to September 30. So any information I give you is gonna be couched with that. We think the shortfall's gonna be limited to sales tax. And we, we have sufficient cash reserves in our general fund to observe, to absorb that deficit. And in case we don't, or something else happens, or something else comes up, or, you know, we have another incident or whatnot, we do have another 375,000 in the budget that we can budget from water over to the general fund, which can be used if necessary, although we're not anticipating that at this time. We have collected roughly 98% of our property taxes, so we do have, we do have some, some cash on hand. And the other thing is, and this is a big kudos to Bernie and his department, development and permit fees are at 141% of budget. So we have some, some sufficient cash coming in for that. We are not expecting a significant impact on water and wastewater user charges. People are home, in fact, we're actually seeing more water being sold since more people are home. They're using their bathrooms more instead of at the office, they're taking more showers, things of that nature. And so we don't see an impact on water and user charges, we think it's gonna probably go up a little bit. Again, if the current situation goes on for a prolonged and extended period of time, we will probably all need to revisit a long-term solution as to a long-term strategy. But if it's a normal window where, where we come back to normal, say, May 1, or even mid-May, we feel we're gonna be in good shape coming out of this. And of course, obviously, public health and safety are paramount to the City of Willow Park. Just a couple of notes that came in this week. Our April sales tax came in on Monday, and it was essentially unchanged from April of 2019. I think we were down a total of about $130 between April 19 and April 2020. That does not mean that, that we're coming out unscathed, our sales tax lags about six weeks behind the actual events, the actual sales. So we expect May to be less, we expect June to be much less. If they start the economy back up and going, say, May 1, you know, that will be reflected in our July receipts. And so as, as we start to see the economy getting ramped up, we can kind of adjust upwards our sales tax collections. But, you know, right now, we don't know what that looks like, but I think we're, we're in good shape in the short term. Just looking ahead a little bit to the budget for next year, I've advised all department heads to basically produce a flat budget, in other words, no increases, no COLA, no pay increases. If you need additional equipment or whatever, we need to scrutinize that a little bit more carefully than we have in the past. And so, and all department heads have been understanding about, about what next year's budget's going to look like. And so we're trying to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, and we're trying to conserve as much of that as we can and still, still serve us our public as well.
Thanks, Brian, any questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. Item number five, to consider and act on items to be considered for future council, future council meetings.
Anybody got anything?
I don't think anyone has anything right now.
The, and this kind of flows into the next one. Without having anything pertinent, we have nothing on the schedule for April the 28th, which would be our next scheduled meeting. So assuming that we're only gonna meet May 12th, I've got the swearing-in of Nathan Crummell, and a fond farewell to Councilmember Gabe McCon. And hopefully, we can all be together in the same room and get that done, but that's the only thing I have right now in that docket.
We'll need a motion to cancel the, the April 28th meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, could we have a motion to cancel the April 28th meeting, please?
I'll make a motion to cancel the April 28th meeting, Gary.
Thank you. All right, Alicia, would you take roll, please?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Councilmember Fennel?
Aye.
Councilmember Runningbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember McCon?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for dialing in tonight, and I'd like to thank Brian and all the city employees for their work during this pandemic period, I'd like to thank Chief West, Chief Lenore, Raymond, all the city employees. I'd like to thank the businesses of Willow Park that have been very accommodating during this troubling time. We'll have some conference calls in the next few days and hopefully get some clarity in the next two or three weeks as to what things will look like then, and then go from there. So I appreciate everyone for their help and cooperation, Mr. Grimes, do you have anything?
No, thank you, council, for your support. I do want to say one thing, I want to just acknowledge the efforts of Alicia and Rose. This may have looked easy, and I'm pretty sure some of you guys familiar with Zoom probably thinks it's easy, but these two ladies have put in a lot of work to try to make this, to try to pull this thing off. And I wanted to publicly congratulate them and thank them for their effort.
Thank you, Rose and Alicia, it was easier for me, I just sit here. Rose is hitting the buttons. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn, please?
I move we adjourn.
Okay.
Would you take a roll call, Alicia, please?
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Councilmember Fennel?
Aye.
Councilmember Runningbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember McCon?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thanks, everyone, have a great week, if you have any questions, get in touch with Brian, and we'll talk to you soon, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.